I'd like to call the City Council meeting of Monday, January 3rd, 2022 to order. If I can have the city clerk, please call the rail.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Busque. Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
May we have a quorum?
All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
I'd like to add to the regular agenda. I'd like to make a motion.
To make a motion for what?
To add to the regular agenda.
What would you like to add to the regular agenda?
I'd like to add number 14, which will be, "Review the health of our City Council regarding the new virus."
What?
Review the health issues of our City Council regarding the new virus.
I'm opposed to that.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. So...
That's a motion.
All right, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, I have a second by Councilmember Busque, I have a second...
No, by Peter.
Noble.
No, when I asked for agenda approval, you made a motion, right? You made a motion, it was seconded by Councilmember Dugo. I now have a second motion by Councilmember Noble to add an item number four, to add an item number 14, which is the health of...
To review the health of the City Council members regarding the virus.
To review the health of City Council members regarding the virus. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yes. Can I make a comment? That's against HIPAA laws. We're employees. You're going to discuss our health up here?
All right, so I'm going to defer...
I think the motion, you want to discuss it, you can.
All right, so I have a, I'm going to defer to our city attorney. So I have a second, to our city attorney. So I have a second motion, which is seconded by the original second. The Councilmember Dugo, so can you please clarify?
At this point, you vote on the pending motion, which is the one that was just made by Councilmember Noble and seconded by Councilmember Noble and seconded by Councilmember Dugo. If that passes, then you're amending the agenda.
Okay.
If it doesn't pass, then you go back to the original motion.
I have a question for the, for the city attorney.
Councilmember Busque and then Councilmember, uh...
Mayor.
Councilmember, uh...
Mayor. Aren't there HIPAA laws against discussing employees' health, especially publicly?
You cannot discuss individual council members or employees' health issues. You could, for example, though, I don't know what Commissioner, Councilman Noble, I don't know what Commissioner, Councilman Noble has in mind, you could be talking about in general, health issues should be six feet apart, the general concept of...
That's the way I took it. And that was why I did the second, because he wasn't specific, just talking, assuming policy may be regarding, assuming policy may be regarding the council.
Okay. And just for clarification purposes, because this was not announced in the regular announcements of the agenda, is there any limiting factors to the conversation?
No, you are allowed to add something to the agenda, like that.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember...
Like that.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Noble to add an item 14 to discuss health of City Council members. I have a second by Councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so we have a motion to add item 14, and now can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 14?
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 14. Addition of item 14. Second, again.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Busque, seconded by Councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, is there anyone from the public that wishes to make comments on items on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, moving on to special business. Tonight, we have the 2021 City Photo Contest winners. Who's going to be presenting this?
I will be presenting, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, and then we have our city manager, Andrew McPhee, presenting.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're very excited tonight to be able to present our next round of winners for our City Photo Contest, which the theme, City Photo Contest, which the theme of that contest is capturing the beauty of Green Acres. This contest was established back in 2018. If you've had the opportunity to drive through the city, you will see the utility boxes in the city have been wrapped with photos. Those utility boxes were wrapped with photo contest winners, wrapped with photo contest winners, photo contest submissions. We thought that that was a great way to honor those that took the time to enter our contest and provide some visibility for the work that they have, that they've submitted, so we were really excited about that. This most recent round of submittals, we received 29 of submittals, we received 29 submittals to the 2021 Photo Contest, 10 of which were viable photos for enlarging and judging. Unfortunately, there is criteria to ensure the integrity of the photo, and the others were not able to be enlarged and still maintain the integrity of the enlarged and still maintain the integrity of the photos. So, all of that information is on the website regarding what the requirements are for any submittals of photos. But 29 were submitted, 10 were viable photos. The selection committee is represented by each of the city departments, are represented from each of the city departments, and the committee presented it from each of the city departments, and the committee does not know who submitted the photos, when they are submitting and when they're judging them. Before we go into our winners and recognizing them, special thanks to Laura Spies, who is our Recreation Supervisor. She is in our Community and Recreation Services Department, and she coordinates and manages this program, so we're really appreciative of that effort. And then in addition, a very special thank you to Blanca MacRae. She is the owner of the State Farm Office on Lake Worth Road, who sponsors the gift card awards tonight, and she also served as a guest judge. So, thanks so much for her involvement and her partnership and wanting to be involved in this program as well. So, the three top scoring submissions, you will see those here in City Hall, and first, second, and third by the top, the middle, and the bottom. First, top, the middle, and the bottom. First place, our very own Deputy Mayor John Tharp. He took the photo there at the very top, I believe that was in his backyard. He took that photo in his backyard, and the prize for first place was $100. That gift card he did donate to, that gift card he did donate to our Youth Programs Department. Second place, Amy DiMartino. Congratulations. Second place, Amy DiMartino. Hers is of the Heron, I believe that's a Heron, and I think she took that one in her backyard as well. She lives here in the city of her as well. She lives here in the city of Green Acres, and just to clarify, all submissions have to be pictures taken within the city of Green Acres. She received a $75 gift card for second place, and interestingly, Amy does have a picture that is already displayed on one of the utility boxes in the city on Lake Worth Road. Third place, Yago Sacini. Third place, Yago Sacini. Congratulations, thank you. Third place is Yago Sacini. He got a $50 gift card, and his picture is of the fireworks. Yago is an expert taking firework pictures here in the city. He took the picture that's at the entrance, the picture that's at the entrance of Community Park, that firework display picture that's on the utility box at the entrance of our Community Park, he took that picture. We also use that picture in some of our 95th Anniversary banners, so very visible photo here in the city. Congratulations to all three of you, thank you so much. Congratulations to all three of you, thank you so much for taking the time to try and find some great photos for us, and we hope that others will be interested in submitting photos to this round, which this round is currently open and receiving photos, and that information is on the city's website. So, thank you so much again, we really appreciate it.
Do you want me to...
Again, we really appreciate it.
Do you want me to put a big arm to the boss? Excellent, we are extremely proud of those utility boxes, so thank you for your contribution. All right, moving on to our second, our second special business proclamation. We have our Florida Arbor Day, and if we can have the city clerk read the proclamation?
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, Florida proclaiming January 14, 2020 as Arbor Day to promote wise restorations stewardship of local habitats and planting of native trees, as well as the maintenance of native trees. Thank you.
Thank you. And Barbara is here, thank you so much for everything that you do for us. Usually, we do a presentation upfront, for us, usually we do a presentation upfront, but because of COVID protocols right now, we took the pictures in advance, and that also helps us move the agenda a little bit further along, so Barbara, thank you so much.
Mayor, if I can, just to note, if I can, just to note, Ms. Hadso and her team, and they are very important to our youth programs and the work that they do with our youth programs. They spend a lot of time educating our youth about the environment, and trees, and flowers, and planting hydroponics, so planting hydroponics, so we're really excited and happy to have them as a partner for the city. So, thank you very much for all the time that you contribute to the city.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, moving on to item number three, our consent agenda. Do I have a, do I have a motion to approve, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dugo, seconded by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on to our regular agenda, item number four, we have, our regular agenda, item number four, we have public hearing for ordinance 2021-05, second reading. If I can have the city clerk read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-05, second reading, amended the future land use map of the future land use settlement of the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of 14 parcels of land totaling approximately 33.059 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail, approximately 1,400 feet north of Lantana Road from a Palm Beach County designation of medium residential five units per acre, and low designation of medium residential five units per acre, and low residential one unit per acre, to a city of Green Acres designation of residential medium density and residential high density, as requested by the petitioner Whitman Group, agent for the owners Ian and Fred K. Manor, Aaron and Francis LLC, American German Club, Ernest and Winn's LLC, American German Club, Ernest and Winn, Chapman, Claudia Cornell, Costello, DeMossu, Matthew Green, Melanie and Noel Maledonis, Shipley Enterprises, Philip Sees, Virginia Walter, Cuffer Bernaz, providing for appeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for a transmittal to the Department of Severability, providing for a transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and today we have Cara Irwin-Ferris, Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, presenting.
Hi, good evening. Before you tonight is the second read, before you tonight is the second reading of the Comprehensive Plan, CPA 2004, for Blossom Trail, also formerly known as Nash Trail. So, this is second reading, but it's also public hearing tonight for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So, I'm going to briefly go through the application, because I did a very, a large presentation the last time, and in depth. As you can see, the site in red at the bottom of the screen, it's located in the south, central location of our city, central location of our city, more towards the east than the west. It's a, the site itself is a combination of 13 parcels. We did annex 14, but there are 13 that are being, that are part of this application to change the location, to change the land use this evening. The current existing Palm Beach County future land use is MR5, residential medium with five units per acre. There is also a two and a half acre parcel that has an LR1, a low residential, a low residential. Overall, looking at with the county's transfer of development rights, as well as the opportunities for workforce housing, they're consistent with our existing designations of residential medium and residential high, because the county allows high. Because the county allows for gross density, we only allow for net density, so we require them to take out all of the area of their roadways for their development in determining their density, so it doesn't limit them upwards of 20 to 25% sometimes. The proposed, the proposed land use designation is residential medium on 7.91 acres and residential high on 25.15 acres. In the land use analysis, we look at compatibility to the north, south, east, and west, to the north, east, and west are other, east and west are other residential communities, and this proposed application is compatible with, and to the south is county's approvals for industrial and commercial and institutional uses that front on Lantana Road. The application for the land, the application for the land use has to look at concurrency, whether or not they get letters of capacity from all of our providers. For instance, the school board will write a capacity letter as to whether or not they have capacity for the number of students that they project would come out of the development, based on the number of homes and population, based on the number of homes and population projections. You also look at Lake Worth Drainage District, capacity for drainage, the county's TPS, capacity for traffic, and then when we did our annexation, we looked at capacities for fire, rescue, and police, and then they also look at this for, and then they also look at this for concurrency as well. We do, we do find that the application is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, consistent with Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council's Strategic Regional Policy Plan, and consistent with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. Staff does recommend approval of CPA 2004 through the adoption of ordinance 2021-05.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, all right, like to open public hearing for ordinance, for ordinance 2021-05, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Palahinik. Can I remove this to speak, or have to keep it on?
Andrew, does he have to remove the mask or no?
Um, we would ask that speaking only because, just speaking only because, just if others are coming up to the mic, it just keeps the mic more sanitary.
No problem. Can you reset his timer, please?
Listen, I have one paragraph, it's one paragraph, so if I speak slowly, I could speak on another topic, but it's one page, so I'll try to get through it as fast as I can. Get through it as fast as I can. Good evening, members, my name is Robert Palahinik. I am on the northwest corner 5536, agenda related to 2030, 2021-05, and ordinances 2021-06. Dear Honorable Councilmen, 06, dear Honorable Councilmen, we, above, are the residents and property owners adjacent to and most adversely affected by the ordinance and resolutions listed above, allowing the developer, D.R. Horton, to build a high-density residential project on agricultural equestrian estate homes, project on agricultural equestrian estate homes, zone land. We ask this council for a 45-day extension slash postponement for further examination and consideration of these ordinance and resolution. Furthermore, one of the parties is unable to attend due to COVID, and time is not of the essence. It's not like the COVID, and time is not of the essence. It's not like they're going to start building this tomorrow. The extension is necessary for all parties to examine the ramifications of these ordinances. These ordinances stem from the annexation of the parcel and have been written for the specific parcel and not the general best interest, for the specific parcel and not the general best interest of the residents of the city of Green Acres. We believe that there has not been a full vetting of all the ramifications, and even the initial conclusion by the city that it had enough public services to support annexation should be reexamined since these ordinances, resolutions now, should be reexamined since these ordinances, resolutions now provide for a 2,300% increase in residences. Questions need to be asked and answered regarding libraries, utilities, like water, sewers, schools, roads, police, fire, EMS, none of these have been specifically addressed in regards to giving, directly addressed in regards to giving D.R. Horton the bearhead for this highly dense, high, high-density, 2,300% increase that these ordinance and resolutions provide. The extension will give all parties the ability to examine the full effects of disregarding the zoning board's conclusion that, the proposed, regarding the zoning board's conclusion that the proposed D.R. Horton development was not, and is not, in keeping with the City of Green Acres Land Development Code. Had this council proceeded to override the zoning boards now, then the people of Green Acres would have the ability to challenge that overriding in a court of law. This action by the, this overriding in a court of law, this action by the council is to modify the law to conform to the developer's project, instead of the developer project conforming to the LDC, and circumventing the rights of the people. This whole process from the annexation to the changes of the LDC considered by the, to the changes of the LDC considered by the council negate the residents of Green Acres ability to challenge in a court of law what is in essence a variance from the LDC given to the developer. These ordinances raise, raising the density 150%, and the resolution providing for zero lot lines, 10% and the resolution providing for zero lot lines are of no value to the residents of the city of Green Acres for this tremendous increase in density. The developer has not been required to improve roads, provide open spaces or park space, provide any concessions for the construction of utilities, schools, police, fire, EMS, for the construction of utilities, schools, police, fire, EMS, and has not been required to provide any workforce housing. We understand that the application has been made by D.R. Horton for this tremendous density increase before Palm Beach County, then all of these aforementioned issues would have been addressed, mentioned issues would have been addressed in favor of the residents of Palm Beach County. That brings into question the true form of that exemption that applied. No evidence has been presented that the developer cannot proceed with the project under the current zoning, that the zoning existed when, under the current zoning, that the zoning existed when they went into contract on the land. This letter was provided to each of you electronically by me and Mr. Donovan Scott, and I'm going to hand it to the clerk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Could I just ask a question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question to the...
Sure. Councilmember Pierce. Councilmember Pierce.
The gentleman you asked about the sewers, you know, and you just went down a list of things. Wasn't that already looked at?
Yes, we do, for...
Want to speak into the microphone?
Sure. So, so we're also processing a special exceptional site plan review. When we initially look at concurrency, we look at whether or not we can serve, or when we look at annexation, we look whether or not we can serve the area, which we looked at it as eight homes, and we said we could serve it, we annexed it. Through the, we could serve it, we annexed it. Through the development review process, we look at whether or not we can serve the proposed development. Everyone looks at it, fire rescue, PBSO, it goes out to Lake Worth Drainage District, Palm Beach County Schools, Palm Beach County Land Development for engineering and roadway capacity, for engineering and roadway capacity, as well as, you know, the water and sewer capacity. So, all of these things, we have letters from all of these agencies granting our capacity or approval for that capacity for the development to move forward. They would not be able to get permits without those things, would not be able to get permits without those things. And the other issue that was brought up in regards to planning for libraries or government facilities, the applicant by part of our code is required to pay what we consider a city's impact fee. We have a recreation impact fee based on the population projection, and we also have a government impact projection, and we also have a government impact fee based on the population projection. So, they either can donate property for these things, and based on the value of their property, or they can pay us at the time of plat. So, these things are all considered as part of the development, these things are all considered as part of the development process, and it's all, it's all been looked at for this project.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-05, second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by the Councilmember Pierce, seconded by Councilmember... I have a motion by the Councilmember Pierce, seconded by Councilmember Dugo, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2021-06, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 20...
The clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-06, second reading, approving a zoning change for 14 parcels of land totaling approximately 33.059 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail, approximately 1,400 feet north of Lantana Road from a Palm Beach County designation of agricultural, north of Lantana Road from a Palm Beach County designation of agricultural residential, and residential estate to a city of Green Acres designation of residential medium density two and residential high density, as requested by the petitioner Whitman Group, agent for the owners Ian and Fred K. Manor, Aaron and Francis LLC, American German Club, earning, Aaron and Francis LLC, American German Club, earning some rain treatment, Claudia Cornell and Costello, DeMossu, Matthew Green, Melanie and Noel Maledonis, Shipley Enterprises, Philip Sees, Virginia Walter, and Cuffer Bernaz, providing for changes to the official zoning map, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, and providing for, for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Cara Irwin-Ferris, presenting.
Thank you. This is second reading of ordinance 2021-06 to approve, request 06, to approve, request approval for Blossom Trail, also known as Nash Trail, ZC 2004. Once again, there are 13, we have 14 parcels altogether, which are provided in the sketch of the survey. We did annex, we did annex these 14 parcels. We also annexed an additional parcel down at the southeast corner, but it's not a part of this application. Palm Beach County zoning currently has an agricultural residential AR, which permits single-family residential AR, which permits single-family residential, recreational, and agricultural uses. One of the properties located at 5141 Nash Trail has a Palm Beach County residential estate district zoning designation, which provides for transition between agricultural and conservation areas, and more urban residential communities, and more urban residential communities. The proposed zoning that the city has chosen is consistent with the land use that we've provided for the sites. For the portion, the 7.9 acres that has a residential medium land use, has a residential medium land use, we're proposing an RM2, residential medium two zoning designation. That's the area in, area in yellow. And the 25.15 acres, that is dark, like a gray color, it's consistent with the underlying...
And the 25.15 acres that is dark, like a gray color, it's consistent with the underlying, it's consistent with the underlying land use of residential high designation with the RH or residential high zoning designation. When we look at the criteria or the finding of fact for a zoning change, we make sure it's not contrary to the land use, we make sure it's not contrary to the land use pattern or adverse effect. And when you, when you pull out from the area, when I showed you the aerial, you can see the pattern of development that's evolving around these sites is consistent. The existing land use plan, it's consistent. It's not an isolated district, and it's not an isolated district, and we look at population density patterns, existing district patterns. The amendment is necessary. We cannot develop under Palm Beach County's land use and zoning. Upon annexation, we have a certain amount of time by Florida statutes to apply our own land use and our own zoning to the site, own land use and our own zoning to the site so that we can propose or plan for development for the site. It will not adversely affect public safety or influence living conditions adversely, and the existing zoning needs to be changed, and we're not granting any special privileges to this site, and we're not granting any special privileges to this site that we wouldn't grant for other sites. Staff is recommending approval of ZC 2004 through the adoption of ordinance 2021-06. I do, we have offered during the, um, quasi-judicial hearing, we put the file, quasi-judicial hearing, we put the file into the record and all of the, um, the application that the applicant has submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for the director? All right, seeing none. I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021, public hearing for ordinance 2021-06. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Again, Robert Palahniuk, my comments from the letter I provided to the, and Robert Palahniuk, my comments from the letter I provided to the clerk stand for this, for this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve ordinance 2021-06, second reading. 2021-06, second reading.
Second. All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on to item six, public hearing for ordinance 2021, public hearing for ordinance 2021-14, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-14, second reading, amending the comprehensive plan more specifically to adopt a property rights element in its entirety as contained herein, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for transmission in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for transmission to the Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and providing for an effective date.
And who's presenting? You are? All right, so we have Director of Development and Neighborhood, Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Kara Irwin-Ferris, presenting.
Okay. We have three comprehensive plan amendments that are for you tonight. All three of them were adopted on the November 1st, 2021 city council agenda, and then they were transmitted to the state for review. They were also to the state for review. They were also transmitted to all the state bodies that do external review, including Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, DEP, FDOT, a lot of the regional and state reviewers. We did not get back any negative comments for the proposal, the amendments, for the proposal, the one before you now. For ordinance 2021-014 is the property rights element, and this was a required element by the state statutes. We're required to process it and adopt it in a time certain. If we don't, we will not be able to process any comprehensive, if we don't, we will not be able to process any comprehensive plan amendments in the future. So, we are doing this to meet our obligation to the state based on the changes to the statutes, and staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2021-014. There have been no changes since first reading and transmitted to the state.
Thank you.
Reading and transmitted to the state.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the council? All right, so, this is a public hearing, so I'm opening a public hearing for ordinance 2021-14. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and add, in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-14, second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to stiff on you.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Councilmember Bousquet, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on, all right, moving on to item seven, public hearing for ordinance 2021-15, second reading. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-15, second reading, amending the comprehensive plan more specifically to update the five-year capital improvements plan of the city of Green Acres as outlined in the improvements plan of the city of Green Acres as outlined in the capital improvement element as contained herein, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for transmission to the Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have Kara Irwin-Ferris presenting. And once again, we have Kara Irwin-Ferris presenting.
Thank you. Before you tonight, under the approval of ordinance 2021-15, is our update to our capital improvements element. This is required by statutes that we update our five-year work program based on the budget that's approved in September. Based on the budget that's approved in September. So, we do this on a yearly basis, and we make sure that what we are approving in our budget, that we allow for new growth, we all, is included in our comprehensive improvement element for our comprehensive plan. We also include, we also include Palm Beach County roadway program, any roads that are within our jurisdiction, and we also include the school facilities plan for, it's usually quite a large document, about 13 pages, for their facilities that they're going to be developing over the next years as well, to be developing over the next years as well. So, this makes sure that our comprehensive plan is consistent with our budget. This was sent to the state after it was approved on first reading by city council on November 1st, and staff does recommend approval of the application, through the application, through the adoption of ordinance 2021-14.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve ordinance-
Sorry, I apologize. You're right. I'll take that motion in a second. I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-15. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-15, second reading.
Second. All right, I have a motion, all right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on to public hearing for 2021-17, second reading. If I can have the city clerk, please read the, uh, the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-17, second reading, amending the comprehensive plan more specifically to update the city of Green Acres 10-year water supply facilities work plan as adopted by reference in the intergovernmental and facilities work plan as adopted by reference in the intergovernmental and public facilities elements as contained herein, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for transmission to the Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and once again, we have Kara- Thank you, and once again, we have Kara Irwin-Ferris presenting.
Okay, thank you very much. Before you this evening is another amendment to our city's comprehensive plan to a couple different elements. The intergovernmental, the public facilities element, and this is to adapt, adopt a water, and this is to adapt, adopt a water supply update to our comprehensive plan. This is a 10-year look at making sure that we are adequately planning for the water supply. We adopt after South Florida adopts, and then Palm Beach County, who provides all water, adopts, and then we adopt their plan, adopts, and then we adopt their plan through the, through the update. So, this is based on requirements for state statute. This was adopted at first reading by city council on November 1st, 2021. It was sent to state as well as the other state, state as well as the other state agencies and regional reviewers, and the, we did not have any comments or any changes to the ordinance or the proposed data and analysis. So, staff does recommend approval of the, of the proposed water supply, amending the proposed water supply plan through the adoption of ordinance 21-17. I believe it's consistent with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council Strategic Regional Policy Plan, Chapter 163. Land Development staff has reviewed it, local planning agency approved, staff has reviewed it, local planning agency approved it, council approved it on first reading, and we have had no objections from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? All right, I'd like to open public hearing, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-17, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, public hearing is for the record, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-2, 17, second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Councilmember Dugle, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, all right, that motion carries five, zero. Moving on to item number nine, public hearing for ordinance 2021-19, second reading. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-19, second reading, amending Green Acres City Code, Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Code, Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 2, land development staff are renaming land development staff to Development Review Committee, replacing outdated names of the city departments or committees, boards, and updating procedures and renaming land development staff to Development Review Committee in other sections of the code, providing for appeal to, Development Review Committee in other sections of the code, providing for appeal to conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and once again, we have our director, Kara Irwin-Ferris, presenting.
Thank you. This is second reading and adoption of ordinance 2021-19, reading and adoption of ordinance 2021-19, and this is a zoning text amendment to our code that is specifically to rename the land development staff to the Development Review Committee, to clarify responsibilities and functions of the Development Review Committee, and align the code section in compliance with recent zoning text amendments and the budget. So, this is zoning text amendments and the budget. So, this is a city-initiated text amendment to the code to update some of the nomenclature and also update the process that we use for reviewing land development applications. So, these are applications like you're seeing tonight, or comprehensive plan, or even small ones like tonight, or comprehensive plan, or even small ones like permits or temporary use applications. Staff does recommend approval upon second reading of ordinance 2021-19.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing, all right, seeing none. Moving on, oh, moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2021-19. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed.
Motion-
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Motion to approve 2021-19, second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember, all right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugle, second by Councilmember Bousquet, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. Moving on to item 10, public hearing for ordinance 2021-20, second reading. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-20-
The ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-20, second reading, amending Green Acres Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 10, amendments to approve special exceptions in site plans, Section 2-212 through Section 2-216, by replacing Class 1, 2, and 3 site plan, and special exception, replacing Class 1, 2, and 3 site plan, and special exception amendments with minor and major site plan, and special exception amendments making similar terminology changes in other sections for consistency, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and we have-
Providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and we have Director Kara Irwin-Ferris presenting again.
Good evening, thank you. Before you tonight is ordinance 2021-20 on second reading. There have been no changes to this ordinance between first and second reading. It's another house cleaning update to the Code of Ordinances, cleaning update to the Code of Ordinances based on how our processes have changed and kind of bringing some things, giving them a more modern look. For existing code provisions, what we've done is, right now, we have Class 1 and Class 3. We had a Class 2, but it was deleted, and Class 3. We had a Class 2, but it was deleted. So, we're removing the Class 1 and Class 2 provisions, and we're providing for major and minor amendments, and we're changing the process slightly for those major and minor amendments. And it's a text amendment that was initiated by staff, by staff. There have been no changes since second reading and staff does, since first reading, and staff does recommend approval of ordinance 2021-20 to amend the Code of Ordinances.
Any comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the council? I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-20, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-20, second reading.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Councilmember Bousquet, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, we're getting, all right, our next item is a quasi-judicial public hearing for resolution, to public hearing for resolution 2021-30. All right, at this point, I'm going to ask staff to read the quasi-judicial hearing process PowerPoint instructions, and I believe our Director Kara Irwin-Ferris is going to be leading us through the process.
Tonight, we are holding a quasi-judicial hearing on the following case. Today, we are holding a quasi-judicial hearing on the following case, SC 2003 Blossom Trail, also known as Nash Trail. This means that the board is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record, record of the proceeding, which consists of the testimony at hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this applica, materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The board is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of witnesses' appearance, and will be permitted in the order of witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, you may do so now when prompted by the chair. All who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the-
All who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of, all who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the cases will now need to be sworn in.
And if I can have the city clerk administer the oath.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, if I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance, all right, if I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance, a resolution by title?
Resolution 2021-30, approving an applicant for a special exception to allow planned unit development in a residential medium 2 and a residential high zoning district located at the northwest corner of the intersection between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail is, of the intersection between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail is approximately 1,400 feet north of Lantana Road, from the Palm Beach County designation of agricultural residential and residential estate to a city of Green Acres designation of residential medium 2 and residential high density as requested by the petitioner, Weapon Group Agent for the owners, Ann and Fred K. Manor, Weapon Group Agent for the owners, Ann and Fred K. Manor, Erin and Francis LLC, American General Club, Ernest and Lynn Tietman, Claudia Cornell, Costello, De Masu, Matthew Green, Melanie and Noah Maladon, Shipley Enterprises, Philip Sees, Virginia Walter, and Carver Bernas, providing for repeal of conflict and resolutions, and providing for an effective, providing for repeal of conflict and resolutions, and providing for an effective date.
All right, and at this time, I'd like to ask council to disclose any expedited communications. I'm going to start from down below, Councilmember Busque.
None.
Deputy Mayor, Mayor Tharp.
None.
Councilmember Noble.
None.
Councilmember Dugan.
None.
Councilmember Pierce.
None.
And I don't have, and, Councilmember Pierce.
None.
And I don't have any on my behalf. All right, so at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come to this podium, state your name and address for the record, and begin your presentation.
Good evening, council. Joel Machado with WGI, representing the application, and WGI representing the application in behalf of the applicant. Before you tonight is the presentation for Blossom Trail, also known as Nash Trail, for four requests for land use, rezoning, special exception for PED and site plan. Just want to state that I was having some technical difficulties earlier with Cara, that I was having some technical difficulties earlier with Cara, and I'll make sure that you see in the presentation that was done for the first council reading, we'll make sure that we have the record updated for you by tomorrow. But it's essentially the same presentation, I'll just go over very briefly, and reserve any time, just go over very briefly, and reserve any time left over for any questions from the council, as you wish. Before you tonight, as stated by Cara, it is just a land use designation change from LR1 to RS and D, residential medium density, and from medium residential medium density, and from medium residential five units to the acre MR5 from Palm Beach County, to the RS HD residential high density, just to comply with the city's land use. The same goes for the rezoning, from RE and AR, residential state under cultural residential, to be in control state under cultural residential, to be in compliance with residential medium density and residential high density as stated in the city's code. And taking final decision tonight, it's a special exception to allow the planned unit development with zero lot lines and cluster development, and disciple and approval for the total of 230, 230, disciple and approval for the total of 230 dwelling units, split within 76 zero lot lines and 154 townhomes in a cluster development pattern. The property is located just north of Lantana Road, west of Haverhill, as on the screen, and just on the screen, and just quickly, the annexation that already took place, hence why we're taking the land use and the rezoning approved earlier. This is just a quick overlay of the zoning and land use designations going from county to city, and from county to city, and we had a slide here just showing compliance and compatibility with the surrounding uses. As terms have changed, so has development in the surrounding areas, and we have other developments previously approved within the city boundaries for zero lot lines, within the city boundaries, for zero lot lines just to the north, to the east, as well as townhomes communities just also to the east and the south, west of the general club. This is just a quick layover of the site plan, with some general information as, with some general information as in anticipation and understanding that we are coming into a built environment, we've kept all the higher density or the multifamily, the, I'm sorry, the cluster hometown homes to the east, closer to Haverhill, and kept the zero lot lines, single-family homes to the west, as zero lot lines, single-family homes to the west as we get closer to the, the remaining state's homes that are further on to the west. Access to the property is maintained of Nash Trail on the south end of the property. It is one means of ingress on the property, only on Nash, and on the property, only on Nash, and is an ingress-only access point on Haverhill, up in the northeast corner of the property. The next few slides are just going to go run through quickly. It's just that the application has been found to be in compliance with all of the elements as stated in the future land use, elements as stated in the future land use, the rezoning criteria, the special exception, and the site plan criteria. At this point in time, we are requesting no variances, no deviations from the code. As Cara stated, today, the application has been found to be in compliance, and we need, has been found to be in compliance, and we meet or exceed all the standards as set forth by the code. The application received, staff recommendation of approval, as well as we did from when we went to planning commission, we received approval for all the requests, we received approval for all the requests, and at the first city council hearing that we had in December 13th, it was unanimous approval for all the requests. So we expect that you do the same tonight. I'll reserve any time for any questions that you may have afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, thank you, at this time, we're going to ask our staff to do their presentation.
Thank you. Before you tonight, the first item is a special exception, is a special exception slash PUD 2003. With the city's code, a special exception for the planned unit development is not for rezoning or a change to the site, it's specifically a use that's permitted on the site. The two special exceptions that are being, right, the two special exceptions that are being requested tonight are to allow a planned unit development, which is the preferred way that the city has determined it wants development to come in a, in a comprehensive about, you know, look at landscaping, aesthetics, roadways, they want aesthetics, roadways, they want a, a full picture of the development, and it's a, it's a planned development. As well as zero lot line also requires a special exception within the zoning designation for both RM and RH, RH. So we're looking at the PED and the zero lot line. The zero lot line development is 76 of the units. Just to give you an overall look at the summary of proposed conceptual plan details, the total land area is 33.06 acres, it's a net of six acres, it's a net acreage of 25.6. So like I said earlier, when you look at land use and density, you have to go by the net acreage. So in this case, the applicant is left with 25.6 acres when you take out all of the road right of way. A total of 76 detached single family. A total of 76 detached single-family zero lot line dwellings are, will provided on individual platted lots, and then a total of 154 fee simple townhome units being developed as cluster development, which is allowed, permitted use within your code. The residential medium density future land use, the residential medium density future land use and residential medium RM2 zoning designation area has a net density of 6.3593 units per net acre. When you're looking at gross, which is consistent with what the county does, you're looking at even less, is a 5.05 units per gross, 5 units per gross acre. The residential high, RSH, future land use designation, and residential high density zoning designation, has a net density of 9.08 units per net acre, or 7.55 units per gross acre, when you add those, the full, when you add those, the full property back in. The gross density of the entire site is 6.96 units per gross acre, which is consistent overall with our RM designation. Access for the site to Nash Trail has a 40-foot wide private road right of ways internal to the site, the road right of ways internal to the site that allow for access onto Nash Trail, which then connects to Haverhill Road. A minimum of 3.5 parking spaces per unit, including garages and individual driveways, which each, with each single family meeting its own parking requirement. They've also provided the additional .5 spaces for, provided the additional .5 spaces for guest parking within the single family, as well as within the townhomes. And the townhome units, they're provided off-site, they have off-site parking at the ends of the terminations of the, the buildings. They have one 0.97 acre recreation area, and includes a clubhouse, a pool and play areas. These are all requirements of the planned unit development. You're required to have your own recreation area, and there's a minimum square footage for the clubhouse, for the clubhouse, and the applicant has exceeded that, three times exceeded what the code requires. They have one 4.29 acre retention lake, and the perimeter buffers around the entire perimeter of the project all meet the code requirements based on what they're adjacent to. They have providers of the survey, survey and a sidewalk system providing access, of the survey, survey and a sidewalk system providing access to each unit and to Nash Trail from the site. This is the conceptual plan, with this special exception approval, we're adopting a conceptual plan. The actual site and development plan, which comes later, will actually be what the permits are based on, this is a conceptual for the, the permits are based on, this is a conceptual for the, the special exception. As you can see, they have a lake in the center, they have the townhome units adjacent to Haverhill Road and Nash Trail, and they've got the zero lot line units, the same units, the single-family homes that are located in the northwest portion of the site, adjacent to 52nd. Overall, the PED, there are requirements for doing a planned unit development that go over and above what straight zoning, go over and above what straight zoning requires for a single-family home. Proposed master plan provide open space that represents 32% or 10.52 acres of the gross acreage of the 33.06 acre site. The code requires a 30%, they're doing a little bit more than that percent, they're doing a little bit more than that, and that 30% is over and above what you would normally have for a single family. The proposed Blossom Trail PUD provides perimeter buffers which exceed the standards shown in the table of zoning code, and a 0.97 acre recreation parcels proposed with a 3,000 square acre recreation parcels, proposed with a 3,000 square foot clubhouse, pool, and totlot. The common recreational facility be accessible to all residents of the planned unit development via the internal roadway and sidewalk system, which is a requirement of the code. All internal private roadways are adequately sized for the proposed number of, roadways are adequately sized for the proposed number of units and will provide future residents with access to the public right of way. They have one gated connection to Nash Trail for ingress and egress for the site, and they also have an egress-only access to Haverhill Road in the northeast section of the site, east section of the site. They, in addition, as conditioned, street lighting will be provided that is consistent with the standards of our code, and the applicant, through concurrent site plan approval, the applicant has provided a unified landscape plan, which is required for a planned unit development, and consistent, for a planned unit development, and consistent with our Finding of fact, in order for the applicant to gain approval for the special exception, they have to meet the criteria of a special exception, but they also have to meet the criteria for the individual uses, in this case, the planned unit, in this case, the planned unit development and the zero lot line. So if you, the staff report did an evaluation on all three of these items relative to the applicant meeting code requirements. The city staff has found their request complies with the objectives and the policies of our comprehensive plan, policies of our comprehensive plan. It complies with the 12 criteria for special exception. The property is landscaped along the perimeter of the side and will provide interior landscaping in quarter, in accordance with our zoning code, and the proposed residential use is compatible with the existing and adjacent residential uses, and residential uses. Staff does recommend approval of SCPUD 2003 through adoption of resolution 2021-030, and we have, based on our finding of fact, determined that they have met the standards of a special exception criteria for that.
Thank you. Are there any, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Cara, for Nash Trail slash Blossom Trail, that's currently unpaved?
Nash Trail?
Yes.
I think they do have asphalt out there in some, I think they do have asphalt out there in some, some of the locations, if you drive out, and some of them are not.
I, I don't think it's asphalt.
It's crushed asphalt.
Is the applicant, are they responsible for improvements of that section?
And they will, and they will, it's included in details of your plan, this section of Nash Trail that they have to improve, and they'll have to get a permit from Palm Beach County Land Development in order to do that. It's part of their TPS approval, or Transportation Concurrent System.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? I, I do have a question. How many, if we had to estimate how many residents or how many people are going to be living here, what would we, what is, what is the average, three and a half people?
So we have numbers that we use to, so we have numbers that we use to determine what their impacts are, what populations that they create, and how it affects, what, how much they pay into our recreation and our government services fees, and this is based on, for the townhomes, I believe it's 2.8, and for the single-family homes, it's 2.4. And the single-family homes, it's 2.4. And that's an average of the number of people, and that, that, that provides a population projection for those sites and their impacts.
So do we have an estimated projection for the entire site?
Do some quick math.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. About 5,520.
If I can ask the applicant, what is the, the price range of these units? And you don't have to be precise, just trying to get a ballpark idea of what's.
It'll be, it'll be. So it'll be approximately in the low 200s for the townhomes, 300s, and 400s for the single families, the zero lot lines, the zero lot lines.
So low 300s, and what was the other?
400s for the zero lot lines, single families.
Okay, thank you.
Low 400s as well.
The reason I ask is, as you know, finding a suitable place to live in Palm, a suitable place to live in Palm Beach County is extremely tough nowadays. Our workforce has sort of been pushed out, because there's no, no more that workforce housing affordable. I consider that Green Acres is sort of the home for, for the workforce in Palm Beach County, for, for the workforce in Palm Beach County. We, we provide a great place to, to live. I think our parks and the services that we provide our community are, are superb. So when I see a project like this, that it's going to help accommodate more individuals, come, that it's going to help accommodate more individuals come into the city, I'm extremely happy about that. That's the only comments I had, that's why I was sort of asking the, the numbers there. So I appreciate that. If I don't see any other comments or questions from the council at this point in time, I'd like to put. I'd like to, also at this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing for Resolution 2021-30. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address. Speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Robert Patterson, 5536, thank you again. I'm in opposition of this resolution. I would think you should already know what the population is going to be here, calculated right here, figuring it out. But that's okay. Like I said, it should be postponed for 45 days. I haven't heard anything on that. I don't think you're going to give me 45 days. So with that, 45 days. So with that, tomorrow morning, I'll be filing injunction with the 15th Judicial to state this proceeding, particularly on public hearing ordinance 2021-05, ordinance 2021-06, quasidjudicial public hearing Resolution 2021-30, and the one we have in pen two, Resolution, the application 2021-31. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, all right, public hearing is now closed. All right, do I have?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the quasi-judicial public hearing Resolution 2021-30.
Second.
30.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Pierce. Second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, we have Resolution 2021-31. If I can have, if I can have our city clerk, please read the resolution by title.
Resolution 2021-31, approving the application for site plan approval to construct 230 dwelling units, 76 zero-lot line homes and 154 townhomes in residential medium two and residential high zoning district located at the northwest. And residential high zoning district located at the northwest corner. A building section between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail is approximately 1,400 feet north of Lantana Road from the Palm Beach County designation of agricultural residential and residential estate to a city of Green Acres designation of residential medium two and residential high density, residential medium two and residential high density as requested by the petitioner, Whitman Group. Agent for the owners Ian and Fred K. Manner, Erin and Francis LLC, American German Club, Ernest and Wayne Cheepman, Claudia Cornell and Costello, De Mausum, Matthew Green, Melanie and Noel Melador, Shipley Enterprises, Philip Sees, Virginia Walter, Confer Bernas, providing for a repeal of conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And we have Cara Irwin for presenting.
Yes. Just to clarify on your last question, I needed to do my, on your last question, I needed to do my decimal point. It's about 550 people, not 5,000, sorry. Yeah, so math on the fly, so I'm a planner, so I apologize. So before you tonight is SP 2003, or Blossom Trail is SP 2003, or Blossom Trail. And this is the site and development plan that brings into effect the development of 230 homes within the city. I don't want to be overly redundant. I went over a lot of this stuff. I'm just going to bring out some of the highlights. A lot of this stuff, I'm just going to bring out some of the highlights. The applicant has a total land area of 33.06 acres. The net acreage is 25.06. They meet their land use densities. They meet their zoning density limitations. They are proposing to provide 40-foot-wide private roadways, which they will then maintain as well as landscape buffers and other amenities within the site. It will be approved and maintained by the project itself. They do have a little under an acre recreation area with clubhouse, pool and play area. They have 4.29-acre retention lake, perimeter buffers and sidewalks that access the entire site. I just want to reiterate that no variances have been granted for this project. They have met our codes. We have code codes. We have code requirements, and they are meeting them by the letter of the law for setbacks and all of the approvals. There are no variances that were approved for this project. And we have not changed the code for the, we have not changed the code for the project either. This is the proposed site plan. Within the site, they have a central lake, a little over four acres. They have townhome units, or what they're using our code requirements for what they call cluster homes, which is an allowable use within the RH zoning district. And then they also have the zero-lot line homes, which are a special exception which was approved. And they'll have to meet the setbacks and the requirements of those zoning designations for those, for these designations for this project. The landscape plan that they provide is a master landscape plan. They'll have master buffer systems around the entire site and roadway, street tree requirements. And they will be maintained by the HOA or POA, maintained by the HOA or POA that's created for the site. And they meet the minimum code requirements for what they're adjacent to. Our code works if you're adjacent to a roadway. On Haverhill Road, they have 20-foot buffers adjacent to the residential communities. They have 10-foot buffers adjacent to Nash Trail. 10-foot buffers adjacent to Nash Trail. They have a 15-foot buffers. And then adjacent to the Lake Worth drainage, they also have, in residential on the other side, they have 10-foot buffers. These buffers include berms, in some locations fences. And they are, they meet our code requirements for the number of trees and shrubs that are provided. So the landscape plan goes around the entire perimeter, and the applicant has provided us detailed sections of each of those perimeters that are for the master, of each of those perimeters that are for the master association buffer. They also are required to provide landscaping on each individual lot based on what our code requirements are. And they also are required to landscape the recreation parcel and the playground and the area surrounding the lake. And the playground and the area surrounding the lake, they are to provide latoral plantings for that. They're also providing, as I said, typical landscape plans for the single-family units as well as for the townhome units. And this is a requirement of code based on square footage of the lots. The wastewater and sewer is accessed off of Haverhill Road. There's a force main that comes down on the east side of Haverhill. And then there is the water main that comes down on the west side of Haverhill. The proposed project will be accessing, the proposed project will be accessing those, bringing them down via Nash Trail. And they also will be providing their own lift station on-site. As I said before, the project goes through land development staff and a concurrency review. It went to land development staff November 26, 2020, and it had multiple rounds, 26, 2020, and it had multiple rounds of reviews and comments that get sent out to every, every member of the LDS. And we also get letters of capacity and approval from Palm Beach County for wastewater and water capacity, traffic and roadway capacity. The school districts in the school capacity. We look at fire, rescue and accessibility. Fire rescue also looks to make sure that their trucks, waste management makes sure that their trucks have access. And we get a letter from the post office as well. And then they have to pay government and recreation fees for the approval of their project. Approval of SP 03, subject to the conditions of approval contained in this staff report. Staff recommends through the adoption of Resolution 2021-31 for the site and development plan for Blossom Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021-31.
Second.
And we'd have a motion, maybe councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. Once again, are there any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there from the council? Seeing none, are you in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm assuming that was everyone? Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on to item 13, board appointment. Team board appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals and Local Planning Agency. We have our city manager, Andrew McQ, who's going to be leading the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to City Code Chapter 16, the new board named Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, Local Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, Local Planning Agency, shall consist of a five-member advisory board with two alternate members to hear, consider and make recommendations relating to applications for annexations, zoning site and development plans and special exceptions, all of whom shall be appointed by the mayor, all of whom shall be appointed by the mayor upon advice and consent of the city council. The term of office for members of the board shall be three years, and all members of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals shall be residents of the city except to obtain members with technical and professional expertise from within Palm Beach County to serve on the from within Palm Beach County to serve on the board. The mayor is recommending the following to be appointed regular members, Danette Fitzgerald, Betty Ann Latauski, Anne Edmondson, Joan Hayes and Emily Jacobs-Roberts. And those appointed as the, and those appointed as the two alternates, Robert Clements and Sedell Meestein. Staff is recommending appointing the members to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the board appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, the board appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, the Board of Appeals and Local Planning Agency. And thank you to all those members that are willing to serve. Greatly appreciated. The alternate.
All right, I'd have a motion by the councilmember Pierce, second by councilmember Noble. Any other comments or questions from the council? On behalf of the city, thank you for everything that you guys do. I know that you guys have a longstanding history with the city, and we are very appreciative of that. So thank you so much. Do I have a motion? Or I have a motion? All right, I have a, or I have a motion? All right, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. All right, we have an item 14, if you're keeping score at home, that we added at the beginning of the meeting. Councilmember Noble would like to lead us in a Councilmember Noble would like to lead us in a conversation regarding health for city council members during COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and my fellow councilperson. I thought it should be a subject, it should be a subject that we should discuss. We were all hoping that the virus was going away, but now with the new variants, we're now concerned that situations could get, or getting worse could get even worse. And we get a little confused whether, we get a little confused whether we should be vaccinated and boosted and et cetera. So it's got to, my concern that I'd like to talk about what we're doing, where we're going, particularly about getting involved in group meetings of sorts. And I'd like to get other input from the council related to this, if I could.
Any particular input that you're looking for from the council? Just from the council?
General discussion on groups and meetings and how we've done up to now.
Okay, so can we start out with maybe the city manager and the attorney kind of giving us guidance? What the governor, obviously, winner, obviously, we're now back in having council meetings in person. So can you give us kind of the lay of the land from that standpoint?
Well, in terms of council meetings, you're correct. We're back in person, and it's, there's been no change. I mean, it's, there's been no change. I mean, the executive orders have long expired. And so as long as you have a quorum physically present, so if three of you are present, then two of you could attend remotely. So nothing has really changed on that front in terms of, in terms of, you know, the vaccines and the masks. As you're aware, it's constantly a moving target. There is no vaccine mandate in the state of Florida. There is national for OSHA, but that doesn't really affect us. In terms of masks, many, doesn't really affect us. In terms of masks, many local governments have gone back to a mask mandate in their government office buildings.
Thank you. And I guess I'm referring to the charter of view here. What is the requirement of the city council? Just to attend to meetings, am I, am I counsel? Just to attend to meetings, am I, am I correct?
The city council were required, in order to hold a meeting, to have a quorum of the city council. Unfortunately, as our city attorney said, we do not have the ability to have full remote meetings as that executive order has expired. And legally, we don't have the ability to do that. But that doesn't, the ability to do that, but that doesn't preclude two of the council members, if they would wish to participate remotely, they can do that as long as we have a quorum here in chambers for our meetings that have to be held in person. Additionally, just from a staffing perspective, some of the things that we have done, we have had a mask, some of the things that we have done, we have had a mask requirement for employees going back months at this point. I know that Palm Beach County several, maybe two months ago, did lift their mask requirement and made it optional. I understand that Palm Beach County re-implemented that. Effective, County re-implemented that. Effective, I believe, today. We did not go that route and follow suit behind Palm Beach County. The thought amongst us was that we would probably see the numbers go up because of the holidays, and we would revisit it after the New Year. So it is status quo with us and our staff at this. It is status quo with us and our staff at this point. For those employees, whenever we're in common areas, a mask is required. We are not requiring the public to wear masks in our building because after research, we have found that legally it is very difficult to do that. We have asked, and we have been very lucky to do that. We have asked, and we have been very lucky that those coming to city hall for passports, which we get a lot of individuals coming for that, and those coming to do business have adhered to the recommendation and had no issue with that. So we've been very grateful for that. But that's how we've handled that. But that's how we've handled staffing issues. From a meeting perspective, we have encouraged remotely, I'm sorry, virtual meetings when possible, and limiting the number of people that are gathered in a meeting. And if we are meeting, and if we are meeting collectively, we ensure that we have the ability to social distance when we are meeting.
So for clarification purposes, the requirement from council members is just to attend to meetings, correct?
Correct, the council members. In order for us to have a meeting council, we need to have a quorum of the council.
All right, councilmember Noble.
Quorum of the council.
All right, councilmember Noble. Anything specifically that you want to add beyond that?
Well, I was thinking in terms of group meetings. You find that airlines are now making a canceling flights and gathering in groups, large groups. And so I'm concerned about whether we're getting involved in meetings and group meetings and whether we should make sure we're not having any of those meetings, which even today, they talked about wearing face masks, wearing face masks in group meetings. So I was wondering whether we had group meetings planned.
If there are, if there are any meetings planned, the requirement is that staff would have to wear a mask. But again, we've encouraged that any But again, we've encouraged that any we've encouraged that any meetings that have been set up, we would like them to be done virtually as much as possible. But that doesn't mean that there would not potentially be a meeting where individuals are meeting collectively, but we're asking that everyone or staff are required to wear a mask, and we're ensuring that we're able to social distance when we have those meetings. We're able to social distance when we have those meetings.
So I know Councilmember Dugoe wants to speak. I do have a question.
Question for clarity.
Councilmember Noble, are we talking about public meetings such as the League of Cities luncheon?
That would be included, yes.
The top, the conversation
Be included, yes.
The top, the conversational topics that we've been having meetings, is that what you were referring to?
Well, we could be referring to those meetings as well, yes. We do have Florida League of Cities meetings, we do have different meetings that we have, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Dugoe.
Well, so that was
Councilmember Dugoe.
Well, so that was like, my question is, and fortunately, we're able to do webinar for Ethics Commission and for classes, we're able to to attend those. But do we, are we obligated to are we obligated to go to League of City meetings or to travel to conferences with this COVID? I don't, I mean, my concern is if we're obligated to do that, or should we be doing that? Because 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 you're going to be with several people, and we do have the variants. So I was just wondering what are after Mr. Noble brought this up, what are, what is the criteria for a councilperson? Are we required? And should we be required? And should we be doing that? Should we be
So, so once again, I just want to clarify, the only requirement from a City Council member is that you attend council meetings. Beyond that, that's that's on the individual that's on the individual person to make their choice.
Correct. With respect to travel, we have conferences, League of Cities conferences, national conferences, legislative conferences, legislative sessions, things like that. Those are not required of the council to attend. The council can opt to attend. The council can opt to attend, and we will make those travel arrangements for council members, for staff, should they have an interest in attending. I would say a lot of conferences are doing both virtually and in person, so you have the ability to choose. But for the most part, it really is a choice, for the most part, it really is a choice. We have not, early on, we did limit travel. And there was a period of time where no travel was allowed. But at this point now, we are, it is optional, understanding that we do have some certifications that are needed for staff, things like that, depending on their position. Staff, things like that, depending on their position. And we just want them to be able to maintain those certifications. So if the entity that's providing a conference or certification is only providing that in person, then we are allowing that, and just understanding that they are taking the protocols that they need to take for themselves to ensure their safety and for anyone around for themselves to ensure their safety and for anyone around them.
I'm glad we had this conversation. I'm glad. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Noble, I think that the last thing we're down to is public public events by the, by the city. What events do we have coming up, City Mayor? What events do we have coming up, City Mayor McHugh?
A couple of events that we did have that we did receive notification today. The city does host the Fiesta de Federal, and that is a community park. It was scheduled for January the eighth. We did receive notification from them we did receive notification from them today that that has been canceled and been rescheduled until March the fifth. So that is one change that we have. Additionally, just some of my report, our Let's Talk series, which we were doing in person. At first, we were doing both virtually and in person. We were doing both virtually and in person. But with this upcoming Let's Talk conversation, the topic is anxiety on the 12th of January. We are actually going to be doing that one virtually, and registration can be done for that on the city website. The other large event that we have pending, and no decision has been made at this point, and no decision has been made at this point, is our Artsy event, which is slated for Saturday, the 22nd of January from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. A lot of what happens at that event is outside. We use this facility. There's a lot of outside activity, but then there also is some activity that happens here inside City Hall. Happens here inside City Hall. At this point right now, we were requiring that anyone entering the inside portion activities would have to wear a mask. But no final decision has been made at this point. If a change needs to be made, if we need to only make it an outside event, we can do that. Or if there's some direction event, we can do that. Or if there's some direction or need that we feel we need to postpone, we can do that as well. So everything is on the table at this point.
I'll defer to you, Councilmember Noble.
Well, how about Palm Beach Day? Is that
We haven't received any notice from the, received any notice from the county that any changes have been made to Palm Beach County days.
Will that be canceled, do you think?
It is slated to be held next week. We haven't received any notification that there has been any change to that.
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask a question?
And any other questions, Councilmember Noble? Yeah, Councilmember Pierce.
Andrea?
Yes.
When it comes to the Artsy?
Yes.
You do, do you have the flexibility?
We do, we have the flexibility to make those changes that we need to make. We've been in communication with all of the vendors, with all of the performers, with everyone involved, with all of the performers, with everyone involved with Artsy, that it is very possible that there may be a last minute change. Everyone understands that, just based on the circumstances that we're in.
The question is, you can make that
Yes, yes, we can, yes, I can, and we can collectively, yes.
That's all I had.
Okay. Any, any other council, any, any other council members? All right, so I think we had a pretty good discussion there regarding events. All right, moving on to discussion items. The first item is the LED lighting updates. We have the LED lighting updates. We have our City Manager Andrew McHugh leading.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on a request by Councilmember Noble to have this item added as a discussion item, staff did a review of the lighting in the city, our lighting in the city, and there was follow-up with FPL. All of the lights of FPL, all of the lights in the city, all of the city streetlights, they have been upgraded to LED lighting, with the exception of San Jose Fair, Community Park. It had been upgraded to LED lighting, but we have found that those lights were not bright enough for what we want for that park. So they are coming back at some that park. So they are coming back at some point to upgrade that lighting to make the lighting brighter in Community Park. In addition, you may see a couple of stragglers that are intermittently placed within the city. There might have been some issues with the pole or the connectivity, that they have not been able to make those transfers. But from what been able to make those transfers, but from what we have been advised by FPL through driving in the city, and then also a review from staff, all city lights have been upgraded to LED at this time.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? All right, thank you. Moving on to, thank you. Moving on to lighting on Haverhill Road. We have our Deputy Mayor John Tharp leading that discussion.
So I I asked everyone to drive the road, and I hope everyone had the opportunity to take, you know, two minutes out of the way. This road is incredibly dark. It's a, this road is incredibly dark. I mean, we've got kids walking on the street, people exercising. We're going to have a new development right off this road. So I asked staff to help and get an estimate. So we can we can have FPL do the installation. It's, that's a we can have FPL do the installation. It's, that's a relatively small sum, sub $1,000. It's the maintenance and the electricity and so forth, which averages out to about $28,000 annually. So, you know, it's, it's got a price tag to it, but I think it certainly enhances to it, but I think it certainly enhances, you know, the aesthetics of the city, the safety. And just hope that we can, you know, figure out a way to aid and forward with this, and then figure out how to pay for it.
So from Haverhill, from what point?
From Lantana all the way up to Lake Worth Road. So where the city starts on so where the city starts on north of Lantana, so right at Nash Trail.
And then we have, I believe we have three schools and a firefighter
Fire rescue.
And it's only 28,000, how much?
28,000 annually for the maintenance and on it. Only for the maintenance and on it.
Mayor, can I add a little bit more to the discussion item? So this was a question that was posed to Palm Beach County because Haverhill is not a Green Acres Road, it is a county road. So I made the request to Palm Beach County request to Palm Beach County for consideration is Palm Beach County, it would be Palm Beach County that would be moving forward with installing the lights. So, and actually, it's a, it's a much larger price tag than that number there. That was just the transfer to the LED. But it is, Palm Beach County would be moving forward, but they do require, Palm Beach County has a County would be moving forward, but they do require, Palm Beach County has a policy that when they put lighting on roads that fall within municipal boundaries, that the municipality is required to maintain those lights. So while we don't own the road, we are required to maintain the lights on our road. And the lights on our road. I had some concern about this. I had some discussion with Deputy Mayor Tharp. Do I think the road is dark? Absolutely, I think the road is dark. Do I think that there's a need for lighting on that stretch of roadway? Yes, I think there's a need for lighting. My frustration came from the fact that we are paying to maintain we are paying to maintain lights on county roads. And we already pay to maintain lights on county roads. And, and this was, this was a concern for me for adding more. Now, I will say, as, as in late, FPL does provide a franchise fee to the county franchise fee to the county and to municipalities for maintenance of roadway lights. The amount that the City of Green Acres receives in franchise fees from FPL is 1.7 million dollars. The amount that Palm Beach County receives from FPL is 34 million dollars. What I am trying million dollars. What I am trying to get clarification on is, and I have reached out to FPL, and I have also reached out to the county, and I have not gotten clarification yet, is at the point with which the municipality takes over the maintenance of the lights on those roads, does that mean whatever formula FPL you mean, whatever formula FPL uses is adjusted to reflect that the municipality is maintaining those lights? And those franchise fees should be adjusted so that the municipality is receiving those franchise fees? I have not received a response yet on that. I am waiting for that. But ultimately, yes, I think lighting is needed on that stretch of Yes, I think lighting is needed on that stretch of roadway. I do, I'm just, that's, that's, that was my concern, and in discussions with Deputy Mayor Tharp, I felt it was important to bring it to the council for some discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I got Councilmember Noble, then Councilmember Pierce.
Nothing.
Councilmember Pierce.
Deputy Mayor, would you have any problems? Deputy Mayor, would you have any problems if we just table this and let Andrea go through the process?
Absolutely not. No, absolutely not. I would, I'd rather get all the information upfront. But this was one of the things that we brought to, as long as we're all in agreement that we need lights, I think the city manager should go forward and, and I think the city manager should go forward and and see how this whole plays out.
Andrea, would that be all right with you, that we just give you some more?
The only thing that's outstanding for me at this point is if I'm maintaining the road and I'm getting the franchise fee, or does the county still get it in their 34 million dollars? I don't know the answer to that, that's what I'm waiting to hear.
But that would also be but that would also be that would also be part of your recommendation to the council?
That is correct, yes. That's correct.
So is it all right, Deputy Mayor, if we hold off and
Absolutely. So I just, for clarity, I don't think we're tabling the issue. I think we're requesting that our city manager continues to our city manager continues to do diligence, right.
Yeah. And the city manager can make a recommendation to the council on what she wants to do, what she gets that information.
We haven't made any determination at this point. So anything, any other council members?
Could I just make one, one thing? Could I just make one, one thing?
Councilwoman Pierce.
Deputy Mayor Tharp, we want to make sure that we work with you in your district, the entire council, and that we, safety is our number one priority. So speaking from my district, I'm willing to I'm willing to work with you any way possible on this issue. And like I said, I thank you for your consideration and letting the city go forward with this a little bit longer. And thank you for your time and your efforts in this matter.
So so, well, once again, I guess I just want to say a couple of things to wrap it up. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman, Deputy Mayor Tharp. I think it's important, I think we have a middle school there, they get out at four. If they stay after school by around 5:00, 5:30, it starts to get dark. I see some of these kids walk 30, it starts to get dark. I see some of these kids walking, crossing the street sometimes. There's no cross guard after a certain time. So I think it's, I think we should look into this, and Andrea, thank you for leading the way on holding those discussions with FPL and the county, so thank you. I think that's, I think these are projects that we thank you, I think that's, I think these are projects that we need to look at for our citizens.
I have two cents to add, if you
Councilmember Dugoe.
I want to say that many of our residents will say to me, oh, my gosh, thank you for the lighting. Our residents our residents have noticed it, and they've commented about it throughout the city. So it's a great project, and yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to item 16, Reclaim Scholarship and Remembrance. 16, Reclaim Scholarship and Remembrance of John Pagliano Lungo, former advisory board member. We have Councilmember Jonathan Pierce presenting.
Yes. I want to, as I mentioned before, I'd like to bring this up for discussion, put it out, I'd like to bring this up for discussion, put it on the agenda next meeting. I'd like to, for one year, name a scholarship, his name's Jim Pagliano. He's a retired major United States Air Force. He has worked on our boards for countless on our boards for countless number of years volunteering. He died due to the COVID unexpectedly. And just in his remembrance, and for the efforts and duties he put in with the city on a volunteer basis, I'd like to ask the council if we could do it. And again, I want to emphasize, you were from, we could do it. And again, I want to emphasize, you were for one year, not for eternity, so that's my comments.
I have a question.
Councilmember Noble.
Did you say for one year?
One year.
One year.
Okay. I do, I do have a few questions, and just for clarity, and I will apologize, I do not know Jim Pagliano, and I wish that I knew him based on his experience in the military. And I guess I'm looking for historical and I guess I'm looking for historical data. City Manager McHugh, when we have had long-serving board members such as this, and I can remember Estelle Freeman being someone who served us the city for many years. What have what have we done to honor these individuals in the past? And what, and I guess Councilmember Pierce, from your standpoint, what is the tie from, with Jim and the scholarship? I guess that's so I'm going to ask first so I'm going to ask first to our city manager, what's the historical, what have we done to honor people who have served the city?
Okay. Just for some information, we do have two scholarships that are currently, and it's not something that's temporary, that have been permanently named apriori, that have been permanently named after. One is named after a former council member, Norman Rose. The other is named after a former employee who passed away. So we do have two scholarships that are named. Denise Paget is the second. So we do have two scholarships that longstanding have been named after two scholarships that longstanding have been named after two individuals. Those are the only two scholarships that have been named after individuals. As far as historically, I don't know what happened before me. Since I have been with the city, we did have a longstanding Since I have been with the city, we did have a longstanding, we did have a longstanding member who served, or a volunteer who served on several city boards, was very involved with the city, passed away. That individual at one point did actually donate a tree to the city prior to her passing. And the city planted, and the city planted the tree. So in remembrance of her, a small plaque was placed in remembrance of her at the tree that she donated to the city. Outside of that, I'm not aware of any other recognitions or any other maybe changes in names to things or other honors or other honors that have been bestowed on individuals who have volunteered on various city boards and have passed away.
And Mr. Mayor?
The second question, Councilmember Pierce.
The difference here is, I'm not asking for anything permanently. I'm not asking for this permanently. I'm not asking for the city to spend any money. Like with Estelle, there's a plaque purchased, which will be there, and there was an expense. I'm asking a one year, just a goodwill, to recognize the individual. And this is where any council member or the mayor could ask, member or the mayor could ask in the future for recognizing a person for an outstanding job for the city and well done.
All right. Councilmember Dugo.
Well, so we do, I think, five, six scholarship awards a year, scholarship awards a year. I asked the chairperson, Councilwoman Bistake.
I think it's five.
Five. And so if this.
We added a six. We added a six for this for school year. Correct.
And it is just like for a temporary, one year honor. I don't know, I did not have the honor of meeting this person. Did not have the honor of meeting this person. I'm sure he gave a lot of time to the advisory board. I mean, I certainly am not opposed to something like this. And should we have another individual who has given time and effort, has given time and effort not only to the city but to our country, I would not be opposed to like doing something like that for a year.
So Deputy Mayor Thorpe.
Well, I think we thank everybody who spends any time, we thank everybody who spends any time on a board. We thank them greatly for their service. I guess my question and going into the future is, if we do this year and then we forget somebody, I'm not so thrilled with that aspect. I think if we're, I'm not so thrilled with that aspect. I think if we're going to do this, I think we should set out criteria in advance and have it set in stone. I don't know if I'm ready to, you know, just really nearly say, hey, this person should do it, but then this person shouldn't do it. I think if we set us, you know, shouldn't do it. I think if we set us, you know, put a set of criteria in place, I think that's, for me, you know, a more responsible way to do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to go to Councilmember Noble and Councilmember Pierce, and I want to speak to.
Adding on to Mr. Thorpe's comment, in practicality, we have six scholarships. Over a period of time, we're eventually going to run into many more than six people. I mean, just, just if you project a little bit into the future, you can see that that will happen. So, criteria, I think will have to be established for that.
Councilmember Pierce.
Yeah, and that's the point I want to make is that if you have three or four people retiring, they did 20 years worth of service, you don't have to do it all in one year. You don't have to do it all in one year. You could do two this year, two next year. It's up to the council, discretion of the council members, to be able to make that recommendation and the rest of the council agrees to it. But I think we know the people that have served on these boards for a long period of time, have served on these boards for a long period of time. And like I say, there's no outlier capital in to sit here and have to put something etched in stone on something like this, this simple is just, I just want to use a little bit of common sense. And again, emphasize, the point of emphasis is, is for one year, it's not permanent. So, is for one year, it's not permanent. So.
All right.
Everybody can participate, not just one or two people?
Yeah, I'll defer to attorney and then I'll speak. Attorney.
I'm not sure if you want to consider establishing some kind of criteria. As some of you have mentioned, on the go-for-a-basis as to naming, on the go-for-a-basis as to naming rights, whether it's naming for scholarships or naming for something else. You know, people have to have served X number of years, people have to have done this or that. So, I mean, I know we've developed and other communities have naming rights for buildings, for example. I see that you could, you know, it'd be easy to, I see that you could, you know, it'd be easy to transfer that. Maybe look at some of that and transfer that to something just like scholarships.
Okay. I think that's something that the council should, could consider. I guess what I wanted to interject was, you know, and once again, you know, and once again, I didn't know Jim. But if he served the city in a, you know, in a great manner, I feel like a scholarship, and you only do it for one year, but for one year, he intended well, but after that one year, he's no longer remembered or appreciated. So I don't know if we create a criteria for how you, how we can honor you, but we create a wall of honor of some sort, in some sort. And it doesn't have to be anything big, just very similar to how we did with Estelle. Just a plaque where we can, you know, remember this person and their family can come and see that they're remembered and thanked, and I don't remember and thanked. And I don't know, I haven't really thought about this. I'm just trying to memorialize it so that this individual, we've got more than one year remembrance. So I don't know, Andrea, City Manager McQ, what your thoughts would be, maybe allocating a wall somewhere, we're locating a wall somewhere where, you know, that we can honor. I don't know if it's at a park, I don't know if it's here at City Hall. I guess your thoughts.
I have seen in the past where things like this have been established for those, whether it's donors, whether it's individuals who have served in various, who have served in various capacities, you know, on boards, on committees, on things like that. Potentially the criteria for that, or some of the criteria could be, depending on how many years an individual has served, 10 years, 20 years. Those are things that I've seen. It's something that we, those are things that I've seen. It's something that we can look at if that is the direction of the council, that we're looking at either establishing criteria, establishing some type of wall or some type of commemoration for those that have volunteered their service to our various boards and committees. We can, we can look into that.
I'm just saying, I've seen a donor, a donor wall that was absolutely beautiful. It was in the shape of a tree. And when people either donated or whatever the prerequisite set, the council decided they want to move forward with this, they got, they want to move forward with this. They got placed up there in a very beautiful way. With that being said, I think I hear, you know, consensus from the council regarding setting a criteria. Before I move forward with the criteria, I want to kind of get an idea from the council members what their thoughts are. So I'm going to start, obviously, with Councilmember Pierce first.
I want to do a one-year recognition.
Scholarship?
One-year recognition of Jim, of Jim in only one year.
Okay. Councilmember Dugo.
First, my reaction to the wall is wonderful and we, but I thought this was because it was, the person had passed away and gave us a great deal of, gave us a great deal of his service. So I'm just for one year and then move forward as we do with the scholarship committee.
Just setting a criteria for moving forward on naming people. I want to go back to that as well. I want to go back to that as well.
But that's not what I'm asking.
I understand what you're asking. I'm asking you, setting a criteria, would you be in favor of setting a criteria moving forward?
Yeah. After this is done.
Okay. Would you be in favor, Councilmember Dugo, of setting a criteria so that we're not randomly picking favorites up here? Because that's, favorites up here. Because that's, it could be seen that way.
Yeah, then I'm in favor of a criteria.
Councilmember Noble.
Definitely I'm in favor of the criteria, but it, and there should be several options submitted to us, submitted to us, so that we can discuss each option to review. Of course, some things, you know, a wall is a good idea, but what do you do when you run out of the wall and a lot of other things? So one of the things that I've seen was, was, was page bricks where you have a pathway that you're developing that you're going to have bricks with the names on it and using them as a paver. But again, to answer your question, yes, I am in favor of a criteria, of a criteria, but it has to have several options for us to review.
And are you in favor of the scholarship name for a year?
We're trying it for one year, yes. I'm not sure that I would have, I would be in favor, I would be in favor of that concept being continued.
So for this, for this particular item on here, do we remember?
We're not voting on it. I don't think I have to give you my.
I'm trying to get a consensus of that. We can bring it forward.
But you're not asking everybody that.
They just.
You're not asking everybody that.
They just, they just said yes, they're in favor of.
And then you went back to the criteria.
I asked both.
Okay. So you're asking me, from my opinion, as to, yes.
So a criteria moving forward and for this specific issue handle?
One has nothing to do with the other. Yes, I'm in favor for the other. Yes, I'm in favor for this one here, for this one person. Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Thorpe.
Yes, in favor of a criteria, to make it something more permanent. I love that idea. As much as I want to thank Jim for his service, as much as I want to thank Jim for his service, I just, without having some sort of criteria, I'd have to say no to the scholarship at this point.
And Councilmember Busque?
Yeah, I'm for a criteria and to do this scholarship, it just, scholarship, it just, without a criteria and without looking at the whole picture, it's, right now it's random and you're going to leave people out. And I just don't agree with just doing this, agree with just doing this temporary.
Okay, so.
Scholarship, yeah.
I don't understand, I don't understand your answer. Would you say?
I'm not for doing a scholarship.
You're not for doing it for this gentleman, this person?
Well.
Is that what you're saying?
The person is irrelevant. I'm not, the person is irrelevant. I'm not, I'm not.
No, it's not relevant. That's the question we've all been asked.
What? I said I'm not in favor of doing it until we have a criteria.
For that gentleman. Okay.
All right. So I believe we have consensus on doing the scholarship for Mr. John. For Mr. John.
Jim.
Jim Pagliano.
On the agenda, it's listed as John, John Pagliano Lungo.
Okay. All right. So I believe we have consensus, three in favor to do the naming of scholarship for one year after, for one year after Jim. And then I believe we also got consensus on setting a criteria for moving forward in future, naming, recognizing an individual for their service and how, and this is, and how, and this is, once again, we're kind of starting out. So we'll leave it to staff to figure out a program and then the criteria as well. Councilmember Noble and Councilmember Dugo.
I must squeeze in my issue, which is, I want to be sure that we're not just presented, I want to be sure that we're not just presented one criteria, that we presented several that we can review.
Okay. City Manager McQ?
Yes. You can do that. Yep.
Councilmember Dugo.
So like, I have a brick with my name on it, it's a PVA. My name on it is a PVA. And I, I know that we're thinking of improving and we have some parks and I think that that might be a, whether than a wall, maybe a paver and a brick for those who have served us or who we want to honor. That was just a comment. That was just a comment.
Okay. Any other? All right. Seeing none? All right. So moving on to item 17, designate artist for wall at Malaluka and Harbor Hill Road. We have councilmember Pierce leading that discussion. Leading that discussion.
Yes. Regarding this, we've talked about this in the past. It's sort of been put on hold, going out and getting bids on this for other artists. We've already had Mr. Hernandez near the community park mural, which was absolutely outstanding, which was absolutely outstanding. I'd like to bring this back onto the agenda where in Deputy Mayor Thorpe's district, the wall in Malaluka and Harbor Hill, where he sits down with the city manager, pick out two or three designs, we can come back and approve it. And in the meantime, Anthony can give us a, and in the meantime, Anthony can give us a price on doing it and we can get the project going.
All right. I guess I'll start. We had, when we were going through the budgeting process and we were putting money aside, we had brought up the idea perhaps, having, brought up the idea perhaps, having Mr. Hernandez. Am I correct?
Correct.
Which, by the way, kudos to him. He did a fabulous job. I constantly get texts or kudos on the wall. People say they want to see more of that. I'm very excited. I see more of that. I'm very excited. And obviously, Mr. Hernandez is married to an employee here and, you know, things could be a little weird and I don't want it to be that way. But I firmly believe that if you want inclusion and diversity, and diversity, you want to invite that. You want to open the doors for more people to be part of that, of that program. And when you, you single one person and you say, okay, come back and do it again, you're not, you're not inviting creativity, you're not inviting more people to be part creativity, you're not inviting more people to be part of the process. And I don't have a problem with, if he is the clear winner of what we're requiring, then we should go in that direction. And that's a direction that the, that the city can make. But at least I want it to be open and inviting. But at least I want it to be open and inviting and let other creative minds take a stab at creating something. I'm not saying no to Anthony. I'm simply saying, let's go through the process, let's see what else is available, see what else is available. And then at the end of the day, when we have all the cards in front of us, then we can, we can make a decision. So I guess what I'm asking for is, let's just wait and go through the process rather than, than rush to give the project to someone who has already created a beautiful project in the city. I already created a beautiful project in the city. I have Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Thorpe, Councilmember Busque, Councilmember Dugo, Councilmember Noble. So I'll start with Deputy Mayor Thorpe.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with you. I think variety is key. So my, is key. So my, as, you know, a little personal history, my daughter and I did a, she had a photo project for school. So we had a few some street art. So we went around and, you know, west Palm Beach, north Palm Beach. And the variety is what really was intriguing, to see the differences between the different, intriguing, to see the differences between the different artists and what they created. I think we're all in agreement that the wall at, you know, Community Park is amazing. I think Mr. Hernandez, you know, I know him individually, he's an amazing individual. But I really think we should, you know, let's, let's get other. let's, let's get other, I really think we should, you know, let's, let's get other ideas, is all that I'll say.
Council member Busque.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Was there something?
Can you speak into the mic, council, council member? Sorry. It won't even reach. Sorry.
It's hard.
Sorry.
It's hard not to look at somebody when you're talking to them. Wasn't there something special about if Mr. Hernandez got it, we wouldn't have to go out for bid? And wasn't his price like really?
Our procurement code doesn't require that we go out to bid for art, require that we go out to bid for art. So that's something that's included. It's specialized, it's individual. So that's something that's included in our procurement code, that that is not a requirement that we have to go out for bid. The last direction that was provided by the council when we last discussed this was using the theme of live, learn, work, and play, compiling a list of art and work and play, compiling a list of artists within Palm Beach County, meeting with them and asking them to provide designs based on that theme of live, learn, work, and play, and then bring something to the council for some consideration and discussion and ultimate choosing from the ultimate choosing from the council to move forward with. So I will tell you that we did compile a list of artists just based on the amount of work that we have in our procurement department right now with just pricing of commodities, the price, you know, the prices have just skyrocketed and, and just the work that we have just skyrocketed and, and just the work that we're doing there. We have not had the ability to reach out and schedule that meeting yet, but we do have the list of artists at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Noble.
No, I thought you were others first.
Oh, council member Dugo. Council member Dugo.
Um, okay. I have two questions. I know that you said there's no criteria on going out for procurement over and above a certain?
There's no, well, there's criteria with what allow the amounts are that can be approved internally by me, can be approved internally by me, and then ultimately approved by the council. But from an art in public places or an art perspective, our procurement code does not require that anything like that. It can be a sole source to a certain extent because it's so individual that it doesn't need to go out to bid.
So this is my.
To go out to bid.
So this is my two cents. I loved the work. I loved it. If you were to ask me, and I know we put that in the budget, however, if you were to say to me, A, art on the Haverhill Road, or, on the Haverhill Road, or lighting, I, I probably would back off at this time because of the cost of the artwork. And I, and I know it's beautiful. But if, if I were looking at budget figures, that would be where I'd be going now.
Well, and just, just to provide some, well, and just, just to provide some additional information, the, the costing for the lighting to maintain, that more than likely wouldn't be something that would be in this fiscal year. It would fall into a future fiscal year, just based on the timing of when they would do an install of lights.
Okay.
Uh, anyone else? Uh, anyone else? Council member Noble, anything to, to add?
We're looking to fill up this face on, we're looking to fill up this face on, on that wall. We're looking for a painting. We should look for something that's attractive. I don't know that we should add any, any mottos or slogans attached to it.
I, I think council member Noble, we're simply trying to, to discuss today as whether to, to wait until the artist that, that, uh, city manager McHugh spoke to, spoke to, have they turned in anything at this?
No, we don't have anything yet. No, we have, we don't.
And do you have anything from Anthony at this point?
No, no. At this point, he was one of the artists on that list based on the direction that was provided. Wanted the artist to submit something using the theme, that theme, live, learn, work, and play that the council agreed when it was discussed, that the council agreed when it was discussed previously, that that would be the theme, that we would do something based on that.
Right. So I think what we, what we had decided originally was to collect input from artists. They're going to sort of create a proposal for us so that they see in that wall.
Correct.
And then we can determine or pick one based on what we like. And then we can determine or pick one based on what we like. And council member, council member Pierce today has asked for us to simply consider Anthony, who hasn't submitted anything at this point either. So I guess my ask would be to wait and go through the process and see what the different artists come, the process and see what the different artists come, come with. And then we can, if ultimately Anthony is the best artist for that wall, then we can still pick him. We're not eliminating Anthony. We're simply going through the process, I guess what I'm saying. So with that being said, I'm going to start with, with that being said, I'm going to start with consensus, council member Busque.
Consensus of what?
We, we just explained it.
Pardon?
I just explained it.
No, I didn't understand what you said.
Okay. Well, I'm, we had this, we had decided on a, on a process for selecting the artwork. We were going to ask artists to submit their proposals. We're waiting for the artists to submit those back.
That I understand.
Council member Pierce today is asking us to select the other artists who did the wall on, the other artists who did the wall on Community Park.
He's asking us to select Anthony?
Anthony without any, he hasn't even submitted a proposal yet.
Right.
So that's, that's what the consensus is. Do we wait for the process or do we select Anthony now? Anthony now.
The process being that we're going to.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Here, what I'm asking is that Anthony Hernandez, the person who did the, the, the painting on Community Park, did Anthony, the park, did Anthony give us a couple of renderings in that we'll, we'll have deputy mayor Tharp and the city manager sit down, since it's his district, he can recommend one and then the council will vote on it so we can get this project going. This has been lingering and it's gone, this has been lingering and it's gone nowhere because of the COVID. Trying to get, can you imagine trying to get other artists, here's my rendering, and trying to get us all to, to look at all these things and trying, it would be impossible to do. So I just want to get it going and have Mr. Hernandez do it.
I want a clarification. This project hasn't been lingering. A clarification, this project hasn't been lingering. It got approved in the, in the new budget. Just want to clarify that. All right. So with, I'm looking for consensus. Council member Busque.
Well, we couldn't go wrong with Mr. Hernandez. I think that we really should go through the process, really should go through the process and get different artists' renderings and choose one.
Uh, deputy mayor Tharp.
I, I think we should hold and go through the process.
Council member Noble.
I agree with Mr. Tharp. Mr. Tharp, I think it's unfair just to blindly, it's unfair to Anthony, it's unfair to everyone, including ourselves. We should go through the process and, and make a decision on the best.
Council member Dugo.
I agree. We can't give a green light to one, can't give a green light to one vendor as great as he is. We have to go through the process.
And council member Pierce.
I'll, listen, I wanted to bring it up to get the thing moving.
Good.
I think I've done that. Now we can give direction to the city manager to start this project back up since it's been, start this project back up since it's been now three months since our budget's been approved. And I'll go along with the rest of everybody if that's what they want to do. I'll go along with it. But with the point being made is can we ask our city manager to get this thing up and going? The process started. The process started.
Just, just to form a clarity again, I believe the city manager did mention that she approached artists regarding the projects. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager McHugh?
No, we have not sent anything out to the artists. We have, we have compiled a list of artists in, within Palm Beach County, correct?
We started.
Artists in, within Palm Beach County, correct?
We started compiling. Okay. All right. So we have consensus to continue on the process that we started. We are now moving on to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. State your name and address for the record.
Benjamin Way to 550 dot fifty seven, where your city, Florida. I have about three things I want to speak about. One of those is that we've got a lot, we've got a lot of ordinances in the city and some of them aren't being taken care of. I had roughly a two-mile walk from Military Trail to my house, unless you know where I live. During that two-mile walk, I must have had to get off the sidewalk at least, walk at least 14 times to walk in the road because cars parked across the sidewalks. And that's going through Old Greenacre and worse, Lakewood Hills. The next thing, next thing I'd like to talk about is for Mr. Thorpe, because I think all five of you on the council, with the exception of the mayor, were here when Lanahan was acting city manager. And he was in charge of, the charge of the lighting on Haverhill. And all of that was supposed to be all taken care of by the city, Florida Tower Light, and Palm Beach County. And he strung you guys along. So it's going to be a mess. It's going to be a mess because the city really wants that done, to get that lighting on Haverhill. So it needs to get done. And the second one, we have three council members, I believe, that are up for reelection. I'd like to see, I'd like to see Ms. McHugh designate sometime before that election time to have a, a group meeting with these people or run against these other commissioners to get the idea of what they want in our city as well as our acting commissioners, acting commissioners. So I'd like to see something done along that line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come up, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none. All right, comments from the public is now, all right, comments from the public is now closed. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. Just a few more items. I did discuss a few things earlier, just some changes and some upcoming events. Regarding the property improvement program, the application process has been opened, has been opened. We are accepting applications through March the 1st of this year. And additionally, the educational scholarship program is also accepting applications through April the 8th. So both of those are open and accepting applications. The food pantry for this month will be at the commentary for this month. Will be at the community center on January the 13th and the 27th from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Additionally, COVID testing is ongoing at the community center. Previously, COVID testing was definitely a block up. The vendor that has been providing that to the sender, that has been providing that to the city for the last several months. Unfortunately, because of the high demand, because of some issues that we've had, it is now by appointment only. You can go to the city website to make an appointment for a COVID test. They are there Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Again, it is appointment only. Again, it is appointment only. And for this month, because the second meeting falls on a holiday, there will be no second meeting for the month of January. Our next meeting is February the 7th. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for the city manager? Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the city attorney's report, attorney to our city.
Your report, Mr. Mayor. Happy holidays.
I, I do, I do want to ask, I guess, a legal question regarding the comment just made by, by one of the residents regarding the city hosting a forum, the city hosting a forum. Where does that, I, I feel like that's not something the government typically gets.
No, you're right. Generally, governments do not get involved in things like that. You don't usually use city halls. It's usually a group like the legal women voters or a group like the legal women voters or a local community organization, whether it's a chamber that, you know, will sponsor those kind of events. So it's usually, it's, it really shouldn't be the city. It shouldn't, should not be involved in that.
Yes, council member Busque?
In the past, I believe.
Okay.
In the past, I believe the, two city clerks ago would call the legal women voters and see if they can get something set up like that. Actually, Estelle Freeman was very involved in that. So we could go ahead and contact them, contact them to see if they want to do a forum, but the city should not be running it.
Right. So I, I think it, they would fall on, on the community to, to put that together, not, not on us as a body, right?
And once again, I'd, I'd like to say anything like that is going to bring people in, going to bring people in a room together. I think due to COVID, that might be a little hazardous.
Yeah, it would have to be Zoom, I guess.
It would have to be a Zoom meeting, exactly. It might be complicated, but.
All right. So moving on to the mayor, moving on to the mayor's and city council report. I have no idea where I started last time, so I'm going to start to my left, council member Pierce.
I just want to ask a question of the city attorney regarding the Nash Road project. The gentleman that got up here the last couple of meetings, the last couple of meetings, in order for him, number one, we haven't taken his rights away, correct?
No, we have not.
In order for him to go forward, this body, the council, he had to approve this project. And now he can go to the next step into the courts and see if he can get relief and see if he can get relief from that, correct?
He said that his plan, let's see whether he follows through on that.
The reason I'm bringing this to your attention, I just want to make sure that to the public, we're not taking away anybody's rights by approving anything. We're going based on the recommendations of staff, recommendations of staff.
And, and the input you've gotten at the three different quasi judicial hearings, the two last time and then the one tonight.
Yeah. The other thing I just want to ask is, and I want to reference this to the mayor, if we could kindly adhere to the council policy of three. Adhere to the council policy of three minutes of speaking, if it's all right with you. The last couple of times, we've gone well over that. When the council made the policy, we determined three minutes. So I think we got to adhere to that because it just sets a bad precedent going forward, precedent going forward. You've never had a meeting here where there was hundreds of people wanting to speak and we could be here all night. I have, and I chaired a meeting like that when we adopted the merger of the Greenacres Police into the PBSO. So if I could just kindly ask, so if I could just kindly ask, that we adhere to the three minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Council member Dugo.
Okay.
I'm freezing, that's all. I'm freezing. No comment.
No comment. Council member Noble.
Uh, yes, just to say that I've noticed, yes, just to say that I've noticed the lighting on, on Jog Road and there are a few spots where it needs to be improved and maybe that's because of the pole and whatnot. But it's really an improvement in lighting that we had before. Just to tell you, many years, just to tell you, many years ago, there were no lights at all on Jog Road. And I pushed through very strongly to put the, the lighting on Jog Road. And of course, just to toot my horn a little bit, I was the one that suggested that we needed lighting on Jog also, along with the city, and, along with the city. And it's coming to fruition and something that we really need. The residents, it gets very dark here in the evening and the residents are going to be a lot safer than they were
Deputy mayor start.
I have no report tonight.
Council member Busque. Councilmember Busque.
No.
Councilmember Busque.
Um, I have nothing except to wish everybody a happy and a healthy new year. That's all I got.
All right, for the mayor's report, I got a couple of things. First, I will completely agree with Councilmember Dugo, it is freezing in here. It's, like, I'm literally shivering, it's, like, I'm literally shivering, my hands are like pale, right? We got to, we got to find a, a heavy medium. It's just way, way too cold.
I love it.
And I got a jacket on, I don't even know what else to do, bring gloves. Let's see, I will be going up to Tallahassee, I will be going up to Tallahassee on, I believe it's on Monday, returning on Wednesday or something along, like, along those lines. Going up to Palm Beach County days, I'm going to be working with other lobbyists to see what we can do regarding funding for different projects, regarding funding for different projects here for the city. I've done this every single year except last year because of COVID. I have not been very successful at asking the, the governor and the, our representatives to, to give us money, it has gone to his desk to, to give us money, it has gone to his desk twice, the governor's desk's twice, but it gets vetoed. So wish, wish me luck, call your representatives, let them know that City of Green Acres could use their help on a few different projects. And so I'll be doing that, and so I'll be doing that, I'll be more than happy to report on our next meeting. I do, I wrote a statement, which I kind of never do, but I, I want to read this because, just because I got to get it off my chest. So I know it's campaign season and, so I know it's campaign season and the rumors begin to fly, but I'd like to dispel some rumors that an individual is spreading, I want, I would like to set the record straight. This is my time, this is my report and I just want to clarify my time.
You're not allowed to do this.
What am I doing?
You're not allowed to do this.
What am I doing? You haven't even heard, you haven't even heard what I'm about to say, Councilmember Noble.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pierce, I am about to-
It sounds like you're going to make a political speech or something.
It has, you, you are assuming because you haven't even heard it, so allow me the respect that I give you guys when you guys speak. So I will, when you guys speak. So I will, I will continue.
We'll stop you if you're out of order.
Okay, then you can, you can stop me if I'm out of order. Okay. Just to, just, what is the point of order? I haven't even gone to what I want to say.
We don't get into politics up here.
This is not politics, unfortunately, it's not politics. This is not politics, unfortunately, it's not politics.
Sounds like politics to me.
Talking about a rumor that-
Okay, and I just want to clarify for the record, and I want to clarify for the record, and that's all. You haven't even let me speak.
Sounds like you're running for office somewhere, a higher office, I'm, I'm knowing about that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion in dream meeting.
I have a motion.
I have a question regarding business. May I ask the mayor regarding going to the, the Tallahassee, do we have a lobbyist that also goes there? Yes, right?
And it's- And it's- What the point is?
Well, no, I, I mean, we were talking about-
Is, are you guys all talking at the same time?
No, I wanted to-
This is my time, this is the mayor's report. Can you guys please give me the respect that I give and allow every single person up in the dais-
There's a motion in table, it's been seconded, to a dream meeting.
Heck yeah.
To a dream meeting.
Heck yeah.
To a dream meeting. City Attorney Tercivia, can you please give me some clarity here as to whether we can adjourn without me having my time to speak?
Yes. Theoretically, you can make a motion to adjourn, however historically you've adjourned, however historically you've allowed each member to speak. So I'm, I, again, I'm not sure as to what the mayor's going to say, it's apparently causing a lot of concern as to what he's going to say, but I'm not clarifying, so I'm not sure what he's going to say. So we could start, my only, we kind of, heads up would be if, if you go down this path, then the next meeting, someone can make a motion to adjourn just before you speak, no matter who it is, you know, each council member could-
Well, according to Robert's Rules of Order, someone can make a motion to adjourn.
That's true.
But secondly, I personally am not opposed, secondly, I personally am not opposed to a mayor's report if it regards business. Anybody sitting up here talking about a rumor, I'm going to object to, whether it's the mayor or any one of the council people.
There's a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded, okay, you get out. It's been seconded, okay, you get out.
So you're not going to allow me to speak?
No. Put it in the record, put it in the record.
I think this sets a, a dangerous precedent and, and I think the mayor should be allowed to speak. If legally speaking, he says something he should not, that is upon him and that can be adj, that is upon him and that can be addressed, but we don't know what he's going to say.
We do know-
We know what he's going to say, he does not hesitate, Mr. Noble.
He was going to talk about a rumor, he had to discuss city business and not rumors.
I think we'd let-
There's a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I wonder who made the-
Admiss.